Please join me in welcoming our new employees. So not everyone could make it today, so we're going to announce everybody and we do have a certificate. So if I call your name, if you can come up to the table, Mike will give you your certificate. It's just a welcome certificate to welcome you to our district a little bit more formally. So we'll start with the elementary school. So Dana Ardevini, she's a speech and language teacher at the elementary school. Kelly Dano, band teacher at the elementary school. Michelle Summers, teacher aide at the elementary school. Brooke Hateman, long-term sub for physical education. Welcome Brooke. Courtney Hoffman, teacher aide at the elementary school. Jennifer Blumenthal, special education teacher. Tracy Gellston, music teacher. She hasn't started yet, but she'll be starting next week. She'll be our orchestra teacher at the elementary and at the high school. Kim Schuster, food service helper. Sean Willis, daily building substitute. And Nicholas Funk, teaching assistant. Let's give all of our new people at the elementary school a round of applause. At the middle school, we have Sidney Johnson, school psychologist. Jean Lawrence, AIS reading teacher. Welcome Jean. Lauren Wrigley, special education teacher. Jonathan Klein, long-term substitute. English. Long-term English substitute. And Judith French, teaching assistant. All right, let's give a round of applause to our middle school. At the high school, we have our new principal, Miles Wheat. Come on up, Miles. Welcome, Miles. Wayne Gerring, long-term substitute for science. Thank you, Wayne, for being here. Tim Hart, long-term substitute for England. And then finally, we have Tyler Gebel, who is a library worker. All right, let's give all of our new employees a big round of applause. Again, I want to thank you for choosing Chatham. Know we're here to support you and we look forward to working with you for many years to come. Thank you.
We're on to part two. The faculty staff introduction, the recognition of bravery.
All right, this is pretty amazing. This is pretty amazing and I'm really excited that all four of these people are here today. So with the following people, I know it was hard for us. You know, I had long conversations with all of these people yesterday and some of them were a little, you know, a little hesitant to get honored here, but I really encouraged them and wanted to really thank them for what they did, which I'll tell you about. But could I have Kate Giuliano, Mike Sted, Steve Lowneck, and Mike Zwingelberg? Come on up, please. If you don't mind standing right up in the front here, that would be great. I have to sit because I have to talk on the microphone so they can hear me here. So I would like to recognize these four true heroes. These four heroes saved the life of one of our school bus drivers. A driver took a sip of a drink as she waited for her middle school students and didn't realize that two bees were inside of the container and landed in the driver's mouth. The bee stung the driver in the tongue and the mouth. Immediately, the driver had a severe allergic reaction and needed medical attention. Steve heard the driver yelling for help and went right to action. He immediately called for the middle school nurse and 911. Kate came running outside with her medical bag and allergy EpiPens and medication. As Kate was making her way down to help the driver, Mike Sted jumped right into action. By this point, the driver was vomiting and going in and out of consciousness. Mike Sted held the driver and made sure she did not choke. Kate then came onto the scene and found the stingers and the driver's mouth and tongue. She amazingly pulled the stingers out with tweezers. She then immediately administered EpiPens and Benadryl to the driver. Mike Zwingelberg was there the entire time, supporting not only the driver, but also Kate, Mike, and of course, and of course, the driver the entire time. He was there to support and give, you know, some advice as he was at EMT. After talking to the driver, the driver saw in that she would not be alive today if it wasn't for the four of these heroes. Her doctors told her that her reaction was one of the most severe reactions they have seen and many people who are stung where she was, who have an allergic reaction, often don't make it. The driver told me that Kate stayed with her the entire time and never left her side. Kate, you are a true hero for jumping in and using all of your talent as a school nurse, you know, to really go into action. So this heroic story is a testament to the commitment, the determination, and the bravery of our Chatham employees. The four of you are fine examples of what it means to be a Panther. On behalf of the Board of Education and the bus driver, we thank you for being our Chatham heroes. We will always be grateful. Let's give them a round of applause.
Boy, that's a fantastic moment. Thank you for setting this up because I really enjoyed the fact that we've had a chance to honor. Jumping in like that, that's great. We're so proud, so proud. Okay, you're on to your next.
Okay, so my third task for the beginning of the meeting is welcoming Terry Bordell. So it is with distinct pleasure that I introduce Terry Bordell to the Chatham Board of Education and to our district community. Today, I'm recommending that the Board of Education appoint Terry Bordell to the probationary position of Chatham's Director of Innovation, Curriculum, and Assessment. We received over 30 applicants for this position. A team of teachers, administrators, and I conducted two different interviews. The first round, we brought six candidates and then narrowed it down to three fantastic candidates. During the final round, we asked candidates to prepare a presentation with teacher leaders and then asked some final questions. Terry Bordell came out on top and I'm thrilled to recommend him for this position. Terry started his career here in Chatham as an English teacher, teacher leader, union representative, basketball coach, and served on many committees. He completed his administrative internship in Chatham and worked on many leadership projects. Terry was the assistant high school principal in Chatham for over three years. He worked for a total of 16 years in Chatham before he accepted a district-level job in the city school district of Alvin, where he was the assistant director of professional review. Here, he provided professional development for school leaders, coached teachers and administrators, and observed educators and leaders. Terry's most recent leadership experiences is with the Questar Three Bowses as the chief school improvement officer, in which he has held this position since 2019. Terry leads the office of school improvement, supervises the information officer, supervises the director of data analysis, the director of school library services, the director of ARburn, which works with E&amp;L programs and districts all around the state. He supervises curriculum specialists and also leadership coaching. Terry oversees the development and implementation of professional learning opportunities throughout the region. As a local superintendent of five years, I've had the pleasure of collaborating and working with Terry. He is truly one of the most collaborative, knowledgeable, kind, and hard-working leaders I've had the pleasure to work with. He's done amazing things for school districts around our region and I know he will continue that leadership here in Chatham. Terry is an innovative thinker and collaborator. He has the ability to work with all stakeholders and do what's best for kids. Together and under Terry's curriculum leadership, we are going to do amazing things for the children of our community. Welcome home to Chatham, Terry, and congratulations. Terry, we are truly thrilled to have you and I am honored to recommend you for the position here in Chatham of the Director of Innovation, Curriculum, and Assessment. Is there anything you wanted to say, Terry, to the board? You're welcome to, if you would like to come over to this, not to put you on the hot seat. I didn't even give you the warning, but you just press the button and welcome to speak.
Okay, I don't have a prepared speech for this, but Andrew, thank you for that introduction. That was humbling and kind and I appreciate that. I will just say what you said at the end is probably the most true. I feel like I'm coming home. Throughout my career, I don't know that I would end up where I started, but I can't tell you how excited I am to come back and be here at Chatham. When I walked into high school tonight, it's been a while since I've been in this building and I kind of was overcome with emotion walking in to be back here. I wanted to go peek in my old classroom and take a lap around the building. I didn't do that, but I will be in these buildings and I will be in these classrooms and I cannot wait to work with this administrative team who I have so much respect for, with the teachers, to be in the classrooms and listen and learn from them and hopefully support them and help, most importantly, make the educational journey of the students of Chatham the very, very best that it can be. And putting students first is what I have always believed. We'll do that here. Andrew, I want to thank you for this whole process. I can't wait to work collaboratively with you and make your vision and the Board of Education's vision, whatever I can do to make that a...
I actually came on with my camera on.
I'm committed to. So thank you, thank you for the recommendation. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and I want to say to the four heroes too. I was not expecting to see that tonight. That's just awesome. And one more reason why I'm so proud to be a Panther again. So thank you, thank you, Andrew. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
We're happy to have you here. Okay, we'll move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to speak of any issues that they wanted to speak up on. Is there anybody there who'd like to speak?
I don't think anyone signed up for public comment. And is there anyone at home that's interested in saying anything for public comment? There's a digital hand that you can raise at the bottom of your screen. I don't think anyone's interested. We have 12 people at home, but nobody looks like they want to speak. Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to say that you're welcome to stay, but you have to also work in the morning. So you don't have to stay, you don't feel compelled to stay for the whole meeting. Sometimes we get a little, you know, wordy here and can drag on for a bit. So just if you want to leave, please don't feel uncomfortable by doing that, but you're welcome to stay, of course. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Well, I'm excited to see that we've got giant chunks of steel on the front lawn here, which I presume means that there's more giant chunks of steel coming to finish up our front entrance facade. I'm a little curious, but I'll wait for the superintendent report and such, how everything's going there. But I'm glad we got, we're coming to the end of our summer work schedule.
Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to our student representatives.
All right, so this upcoming Monday, we have our elections for student government. Right now, we have seven applications for all four positions. And then shout out to Mr. Cork because he's already arranged a meeting to come meet with everybody once they're elected. And then, once they are elected, I'm going to talk to Ms. Montgomery about having them come to a board meeting to introduce themselves so you guys can all get to know them. On November 30th, we have the blood drive. That is only for students. But we're hoping to get 30 donors because if that happens, then a senior gets awarded a $500 scholarship through the Red Cross. Last year, we were able to get over 30 donors. I think we like just hit the mark with like 31 or 32. But that was a much bigger turnout than we've had in the past. So we're excited to see, hopefully, we can get more than 30 this time also.
That's great. Thank you, Sasha. Hope so too. Okay, so we are on H1 superintendent's report.
All right, so I just wanted to talk a little bit about, start with school safety. As we all know, this is an incredibly important topic for all of us. I've been meeting with our principals to talk about all of our safety plans. We've been reviewing our safety plans. We're getting organized. Every building will be having regular school safety meetings. We'll be having several district safety level meetings. Throughout the last couple of weeks, I've been meeting with our Questar Health and Safety Team to review plans, also been meeting with Needham as well. We've already submitted our safety plan to New York State, so that has been submitted. We have given our safety plans both to the Chatham Police and also the Columbia County Sheriff's Department. Right now, we're working on extracurricular plans. So, you know, exactly what would happen and how that will work if there ever is an emergency for after-school events. So that's something we're working on and I'll be sharing more information as we go throughout on that as well. Another thing that we are adding, you know, for safety, is we're going to make sure we have a chaperone at our music events. In the past, we've only, Chatham's only really had chaperones specifically for athletic events, but we're going to make sure that there's somebody on for a music event as well going forward. And that way, that person will be trained in some of the different procedure things that we need to make sure. Like Sasha said, I've been working to really kind of get organized with student leadership. A huge part of what we do here, everything that we do is based on students. So one thing I liked to do as superintendent and when I was a principal is really work with our student leaders. So like Sasha mentioned, I reached out to all of our advisors. They're in the process of getting class advisors. They said by early October, right Sasha? You guys should all, you should know who that is. We'll be doing regular, I'll be doing regular meetings with them as well to really be able to come to the district, you know, to tell us what they need as students and what their advice is to help make Chatham a better place. I also, for the board that was here, you know, I did stakeholder interviews as a new, when I was interviewing for my position here. And I met with the student leadership team that was the stakeholder team. And at that interview, I said, "I want to utilize this group to be able to come back and talk about what we talked about during the interview and to see how things are going in the school." So we already have established a group that's going to be meeting regularly and I believe they're called ASCEND, right? Sasha, can you remind me what ASCEND stands for? Do you remember? I didn't mean to put you on the spot because I'm forgetting too.
I know, I was just trying to find in my emails.
That's all right. I will get back. So I thought it was pretty impressive, but they came up with the whole name and the acronyms are ASCEND, but I'll come back. We'll look that up in a minute, Sasha. And, but this group is that group that I met with during my interview and we're going to meet regularly, I think monthly on Thursdays, to be another way to really do the student leadership as well. So I'm excited for that opportunity as well. So when I do these updates, we'll be talking a lot about the student perspective as well. You have it, Sasha? Okay.
It is Advisory Student Consultants for Educational Needs and Development.
Pretty nice, right? Pretty impressive. And that was completely created by the students, so I'm excited about that. So I just came back from my New York State Conference through NISCUS, New York State Council of School Superintendents. I am on the State Curriculum Assessment Team for NISCUS and we had a lot of opportunities to meet with the State Education Department. So just a couple reminders coming from the State of Education. The new regents will be on June 10th for three different subject areas. So there'll be new regents this year for life science, which is what we used to call biology, geometry, and also earth science. So those students will be taking a brand-new regents and because it's a brand-new regents, the state wants a little bit more time to do the scoring of them. So that is going to be a June 10th date, just to remind everybody. We also talked a lot about the fifth and eighth grade science tests and that was the first time those were given last year. And I know from experience at a different district and talking to many of my colleagues, it took our students quite a long time to finish those tests. There are a lot of questions, there's a lot of length. The state is analyzing the state testing results and also how long it took and to see what kind of changes they can make. So they are taking our feedback and they're hoping to make some adjustments to that exam coming up this year. A large conversation was foundation aid and that's something you're going to be hearing Mike and I talk a lot about as we get throughout the year. So I went to a couple workshops from the Rockefeller Center. That is the group that was charged by the governor to really look at that foundation aid formula to see how they can make changes to it. Foundation aid formula has not been updated in many, many years. They're going to be looking at what we all talked about last year was hold harmless as well. So there's a lot of discussion on that. So the person that's in charge of that was presenting and he was talking about how one thing he's going to recommend to the governor is to make sure we do a multi-year process. We can't change it all in one year. It has to be a multi-year. So that made me feel as a superintendent a little bit more positive, thinking, okay, it would be a lot more manageable if we had several years to approach this and there would be a phase-in change. They are looking to look at factors that they need to look at that the old formula didn't, like the poverty count, ELL students, how many ELL students, how many special ed students you have, and re-looking at all those factors and also a little bit of flexibility in the formula. For example, what happens if you have a large influx of a population? Or maybe immigrant students, you know, how could your aid be adjusted? So a lot of good discussion on that. They are due to give their recommendations to the governor by December 1st. Then from there, the governor will do, the governor's office will do what they please with that and then make a recommendation and put that in the budget. And then from January to really April, it's going to be the governor and the legislature trying to figure out what the formula and what the foundation aid is going to be. So we'll be ready for some advocacy when it gets to that point. The other thing they talked about was the Blue Ribbon Committee and that was the change to graduation measurements. They are expecting a draft timeline for implementation on November. So at the November regents meeting, we should have a draft timeline to see what that's going to look like and how that will look in the future. They also said there, it's going to be a phase-in approach. They're not going to change everything at once and not to, you know, not to worry too much about that. So that's a little update for my, you know, for my conference, just some of the nuts and bolts of education. That's all I have.
So they're saying that the governor will produce the results, you know, of what they decide before we have to start putting our budget together. I mean, April is really cutting it.
It will be, yeah.
I thought pretty much all the time, we have to get our budget together before the state puts theirs together. So I would not expect the governor's office to give us anything definitive until it's too late for us. But if the guidance from this think tank is saying, "Do it over several years", they would have a hard time not doing it over seven years, or several years, I would think.
Yeah.
That is positive.
That was the most positive news I heard about the foundation aid change, that they would do it in increments. But yeah, so if you remember, last year it was similar, you know. So they're saying December 1st, they'll make the recommendation to the governor's office. The governor's office will then make, will design a budget, hopefully based on the recommendation. And then that will come out, you know, hopefully, the governor's budget usually comes out in January, right? So that we'll know. And then it's going to be back and forth between the legislature and the governor to come to an agreement during that time. So could they come up with an agreement before April? They could, but being that this might be controversial, hopefully it won't, maybe it won't be, right? Maybe it won't be as big of a deal. So we're not sure yet.
I'm curious if the summary findings are going to be available publicly without FOIA or is that going straight to the governor's office and we don't get to see it?
So that's a good question. They didn't mention that. I believe it should be. I believe the recommendations will, but that's a good point. That never was made clear if it's going to be public recommendations or if it's going right to the governor. It's a good question. I can look into that. It's a good point.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, so we'll move on to operational.
Wait, I have one question.
Sure.
Totally unrelated to what you're talking about, but it's related to that Blue Ribbon Committee. I just found out there's a federal designation, Blue Ribbon winners that are designated by the federal government. Is this related?
No, no, that's, yeah, that's a different, that's, yeah, that's a different, different group. So I think what you're referring to is if you can be a Blue Ribbon school, right? Yeah, that's different than that. Yeah, I don't know why they, it is a similar name, but it is different. And what that is, that's an application process. You have to qualify and the school itself can apply for that. And if you meet criteria, you can be awarded that Blue Ribbon school. But it is two different things.
We have a neighboring recipient, which was just announced over in Pittsfield.
Oh, of course. Oh, great. Yeah, no, it's a huge accomplishment. It's a lot of work for a school district to get, a lot goes into that application.
So actually asked Colliers for an update on where we stand with the project because as I stated, the front entrance, I noticed there wasn't a whole lot of work done this week. So it's a little concerned, but I got some updates. So classrooms are still waiting on the doors and the hardware, so that's going to take some time. But once we get that in, then we'll install those bathrooms. They've been working, I've been seeing them here. They put the exhaust fan curbs in, the ductwork and the grills were installed, so through the ceiling. Fixtures and lighting are this week. I noticed they're doing the lighting today. And then toilet accessories and partitions are scheduled for next week installation, so we're getting close with the bathrooms. And I took, you know, like I said, I looked in there and, you know, this would be great. Really looks good, so I'm excited about that and that's getting done. So the entrance cavity, so that was the big thing because I was wondering what's going on. The piers were the wrong elevation, so they have to redo the concrete and rebar and bolts. So they're going to do that this week. Obviously, it could depend on some of the weather we might be getting. Then it needs to cure for five days, so the goal now is the first week of October, first week of October to put the steel piers in. Yep, yep, so that's going to take a little longer, but like I said, you know, the goal is to get that done in this fall. But they did a good job when they do, when they work and then they close up and open up and that's been fine, so that hasn't really caused any issues. The roofing and the, what is it, the EPAS system, the insulation, they're going to continue to work on that and they're doing that, but they're going to do that throughout the fall. And then the other big thing that they did was the electrical for the generator. So the parking lot out back is closed right now for this week. They dug it up, they're putting in the white, you know, the electrical for the new generator and then they're going to seal it. I talked with the gentleman today for the electrical and that's moving along quickly. So hopefully this week, we have a good shot to get that done. They've been working very fast. So really, there's a little behind on the front piers, but the bathroom's on track and hopefully, early October, we can get that. That'd be great. So that's where the construction is.
Is any of that impacting, like is there any soccer games this week? That's where most people park back there.
Yeah, so right now, you're going to have to go around, you go around, if you're going to park through the MED because that's closed. But remember, a lot of people can also park out front and walk back.
They're just not used to it.
Yeah, it's the ones that really need, it's really for, you know, for people with handicap or something. Those are the ones we want back there. But, so, but same with the teachers, they have to go around right now. But they're moving along. If they can get it done this week, that would be great, so.
Could you clarify on the generator? Are we just doing the pre-work for that or do we actually expect it in unit in before winter?
Pre-work right now.
So we're not going to have a new one before the winter, is that right?
That's correct. Because that's out a long way.
Collier is supposed to be responsible for supervising the concrete contractors, is that right?
That's correct.
All right.
So I'll get an update on what happened and how much it was off, but, you know, obviously, we don't pay for any of that. That's on the general contractor.
It's all coming out of our money.
Well, it's coming out of his, actually, his money because he has a contract, so we're not paying any extra for that. That I'll make sure of.
Anybody else?
Yeah, it's construction, so I'm not, I'm not.
It's just early in the project, right? And...
Yeah, that's for the front, but we have time because that can run through the fall, so I'm not as concerned on that because three weeks would have been great. If it's four or five, there's no issue with that. Remember, this is all pre-work, so originally, remember, a lot of this stuff wasn't going to be done till next summer, so.
Did we order the actual facades? Like is that metalwork? Like is that metalwork already on order for delivery or they're just putting up the supports?
From what I understand, they're going to put every, they're going to try to put it all up. So that means they have everything. I'm not sure what we're going to have for the signage part. That, that's the one piece I'm not totally sure, but they want to put the canopy up and the roof and all of that. Um, and then if they have to finish, you know, the final piece, I'm not sure what that stands.
I, I just don't know. I never really got a clear answer. I'm curious, I mean, they're tearing up the ground again. Is there electrical available somewhere near there? Cause they just filled in the hole I'm looking out there and I'm not seeing any electrical receptacles out there. I'm just struck by the thought that if you need.
There was not electrical in that structure. If we wanted to add something there outside, we can.
Okay.
But it's not in that metal structure that there was nothing, no, no call for that.
Okay.
And then, um, I don't know if, uh, we mentioned, I, I actually saw in the shop, we have our state champion sign, championship sign. Yeah, it looks great. So has our softball and baseball titles on it. That's something, you know, Sal and I wanted to get last year and it took a little while to get, but it did come in. It's going to go out front behind the monument. So obviously we have to wait for construction. But where the monument is out front, they're going to put it right, right in the front there behind that. It stands up pretty tall. So when you walk into the high school, you'll see that or if you go to the athletic fields. But that's where we have, you know, the three, what is it? Four, four, four titles we have now? Yeah, three baseball, one softball. So, but it looks great. So that came in. And then the last thing I've been, we've been working with Andy, been telling him, you know, we, we've really had a kind of drought here for the last three weeks. So we've been getting our, getting sprinklers now on the fields because the fields are really having a tough time, but it does look like some rain tomorrow and Thursday. So that'll help tremendously. So that's my report.
Can I ask one question, Mike?
Yeah, of course.
It goes back to what Andrew was talking about, about budget building, just in thinking about when these days is the FSR due in? The final service request?
That's May 1st.
Is it?
Or both is it?
It's May 1st and before that there could be a preliminary and then afterwards it would be fine. So.
Yes, finalized May 1st. That's when we have to, so usually we do it typically a week before. And just one note on the budget, um, you know, we prepare for this. We've done it with COVID and everything else. That's why we have reserves. That's why we have been really prepared for something that's coming up. So in the unknowns, we just don't make drastic changes. We can buy ourselves some time too. Um, and that's what we've been able to do. We're fortunate, but obviously this foundation, that will be a big discussion. So I was happy to hear that they extended over time, you know, then we'll, you know, but we, like I said, we're not just going to rush in a budget in one year. We can extend it over a couple of years.
Onto new business discussion, discussion of the NISBA resolutions and voting delegates. And we all had a chance to take a look at the proposed resolutions that NISBA put out there for their open meeting. I wasn't quite sure how to address this discussion because there were 34, 37 resolutions. It was, it was lengthy. So I, I emailed everybody, like, you know, I went through and I did like a quick, you know, here's the resolution number, here's basically what it's about. And I just gave my opinion and then I put a space for the board opinion. I only did that just to start the conversation, but I don't know, we, twofold here. We have to decide are there any issues in there that are just hot button topics that Chatham absolutely should jump in, have a delegate and do this. Did we identify anything like that? If so, how much time and effort, you know, should we work on trying to get a delegate? I just wanted to get some thoughts from you guys on what you think about that.
I've got some thoughts about this, having, having participated here. I, is it 37 this year? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not an unusual amount. It's great, like circulating this in advance so that we can see if there's something that is particularly hot button that we've, maybe is related to something that we're dealing with in the district that we want to have an opinion on. I'm a little uncomfortable having an actual board position on something that we haven't actually had a discussion about. That said, I'm perfectly comfortable sending a delegate and leaving it up to them to listen to, there's going to be, people are going to speak, they're going to argue their point after the delegate voting on our behalf. You know, writing, writing a letter and setting our name to it's a little different, but.
I wasn't thinking about, I didn't know about a letter. I was just, I was just trying to open up the discussion about, hey, did anything pop out to you guys? But I mean, I had a couple of things like number eight, nine, 10, and 14 possibly. Uh, the, you know, eight is about the building aid. Uh, nine's the timely decisions on aid. 10 was the hybrid option for electric buses. I mean, some people are saying if we can go with a hybrid option rather than the straight zero emissions. And then the other one, 14, direct funding for both these CBE programs. We're starting to try and expand some of our CBE programs. So those four like kind of rose to the surface of like, hey, do we have an opinion on this? What, you know, did we want to discuss those? I mean, how did you guys want to go about this decision? Cause last year.
Do you, you want to stop at each of those?
Well, it's just up to, I want feedback from you guys. What do you guys think? Is this something that we should really try and get a delegate on? Because I don't know if we have a delegate. But you, Linda, you mentioned sometime that you considered it, but I wasn't sure, you know, we don't want to like.
I, I said if no one else wanted to do it, that I would do it, but maybe being new to the board, I wouldn't know the historical perspective that people would have on some of these things. And as I said, my note of humor is you said we had to hit the button real fast.
Oh.
When we start to vote and, well, anyway, that was just humorous for, for me because sometimes I have trouble with the technology. But I think it's important that we have a voice in this. That would be my personal opinion. Even if it doesn't count, so you know, we know that the southern tier, the big five, we know some of these schools are going to dominate some of the decisions. It happens. Everybody has their lobbyists and what have you, but I always think it's important to have a say and however you want to do that. But if somebody else doesn't come forth, I'll do it if you want a delegate, but.
I'd like to ask Matt a question.
Yeah.
When, when you did it, how, how much of, of your time did that take?
This new format.
The voting is.
This new format, the voting happens quite rapidly.
Uh huh.
It's, I believe under two hours.
Under two hours?
Under two hours. There's prep work, understanding this, this, uh, this manual they put together. But they actually, you know, their side, they usually have, most of these, they're going to have someone speaking for and someone speaking against. So you don't even need to read, you could just listen to that message. You may be missing some other stories. Um, if you're only listening to, um, you know, what someone gets up on and speaks for like three minutes on, but I, I for one would like to have someone from Chatham participate and be there. Um, and it was explained to me when I joined that this was a really good thing for new board members. Um, and I've come to, I've come to really appreciate that, that if you haven't done this before, um, it would be great to do.
That was a new board member in a spot. They don't, you know, they haven't had, heard like a hybrid electric, you know.
You, you can abstain. You can abstain. You don't have to vote on every.
Yeah.
Issue.
Well, that's one that I certainly would like you to get into. You, you have opinions on that. Are you telling me that you? I'm asking you if you possibly can do the voting this year if it only takes two, two hours.
I, I, I don't mind doing it. If I was going to do it, I would, I would just, I wouldn't read this book.
Uh huh.
I wouldn't prepare for it.
Okay.
I would listen to the speakers and I would vote, but I think it's a missed opportunity and not to have a new board member learn the process about lobbying that happens in New York state. So as things come up that are important to us, we have some more organizational knowledge about that process. Because if we really want to, if we really want to be a leader on anything, this is one of the primary avenues to try to make a change in the state. So.
I agree with Matt. I think that we should have a delegate on this. I don't want to be it. I'm very happy to support someone who does want to be it. I did do it when I was a new board member and it is, it's a, it's an experience.
Was it?
It wasn't online. Like it was literally when we went to NISBA, it was like in this huge forum.
Right.
And you had a paddle, right? Number one, and it was, uh, it was an experience. I'd like to think this would, would be an experience too. It might be a little different than it's online. I don't have a problem supporting you, Linda, if you would like to do it.
Well, would it be possible that, Matt, that you would take a lead on doing it, but I would walk through the process with you? I wouldn't be the named delegate, but I'm very glad to sit with you and talk about it and.
I, I actually don't think I can, I can dedicate that much time to it.
Okay.
To support someone else.
Yeah, that was my question.
Yeah.
My question.
Okay. But I'm sure that from the, from the perspective of making sure that you could access a digital platform, that we can get Debbie to, to support you on that.
Yeah, I'm thinking of that, that the time, it's going to take time. It took me time to read through all of these resolutions and yes, I do have some notes on a couple of them, but if you want me to do that, I will.
And I guess as far as process too, like, is there any one, does anyone strongly oppose any of these or feel passionate about one of these to give Linda the bandwidth to listen to the arguments and vote as she feels? Cause I am okay with that. If you feel like, it's not like you can mess anything up.
Right. Or someone, someone can just send me their, their comments on it or we can do them here. It's either way.
When, when's the actual vote? Do you remember?
October 10th.
Uh, so we don't have a lot of time.
Yeah.
Uh, do we have a meeting between now and then?
Yeah, we have the eighth.
We have one meeting. Um, well, here's a question. Would it make you feel more comfortable if between now and the 10th, with the next meeting we have, which is still before the vote, you did like a surface read on these to see if there was one that you felt like, man, I don't know how to make a call on this one. I need some support from the board. And then if you were only bringing, like, like you brought what, six of them? You were like, well, maybe we should think about these.
Right.
If you, if you were going to be the delegate, there might be some of them that you were a little, they weren't so obvious. Some of them are very clear. It's, some of them are very clear, like that it's easy to get behind the idea and some of them are confusing.
Yes, they are. Um, yeah, that, however you want to give me information is, is fine.
Okay. I, I like the question, are, is there anything that we strongly oppose? I don't think there is.
Yeah.
I don't think there is.
Right? There isn't anything that I'm, no.
Can go. And from my experience, the big, the big schools on, on the island and out western New York, they, they write these and they, they'll be going, you know, unless there was something that was being opposed, it's, um.
They, they write them and they do a lot of the work preparing this book, but when it comes down to the votes, that's coming from everywhere.
I understand that.
So, yeah.
I would, if there's one here that, that troubles me, it's the elimination of the regions testing. That is, as Mary Ann wrote to us, it's a, it's a hot button topic, but I do think that given how the resolution is written, maybe a few people want to look, you know, fellow board members want to look at that and you let them know how you feel about it. And I just don't want to vote based on what I think about it. I would, would like to know.
Tell me which number that was. Uh, yes, it's number.
26.
Well, let me ask you about that because this is an area I'm not, I, I'm familiar with all the problems with the regions, but I'm not familiar with the ESSA that they're suggesting replace it. I think one of the biggest problems with the regions is that it's, um, the program's lost all sustainability and it's no longer moving forward. So if there's another program that's actually developing forward, what, what's your, what's your hesitation with eliminating the regions?
Well, it, they are going to go, or the recommendations to go to ESSA, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act. I'm dating myself, but years ago, we had something called the RCTs, the Regions Competency Tests, and they were designed for those students who perhaps were not able to pass the regions. Then they eliminated those and the students had to take the regions. And many of them, because of good teaching and planning, passed those tests and when no one thought they would. And of course there were accommodations for special education and students and so on. The elimination of the regions gives us, if we just do that, it doesn't give us a baseline. It doesn't give us information about the whole area, how we're doing. You know, it can be narrowed down to Columbia County, Green County or what have you. I'm not opposed to a different test. I'm just opposed to the fact that who are we turning this over to and what is it that they're going to give us? I, local testing is great. Uh, I, I love to see that personally, but I'm a little concerned about what we're going to get. So I think there should be more discussion on this and again, send me your thoughts. It's just one thing from, from my background that I have a question about. So I'm willing to use, if you send me information, if you let me know what you feel about something, if it's of, I'll keep a chart and however, whoever wants a majority vote of board or if you don't want it touched or what have you, that's what I'll go with. And, you know, and I, I know I can press the button, but I, I just thought I, you've made a good argument for a new person doing it and so I'll do it if no one wants to.
I just wanted to make a note about, uh, number 26. Now this starts the list that.
Not recommended.
Uh, is not recommending. So I think, you know, if NISBA's not going to recommend.
Their internal committee.
It's not going anywhere. It's not going to go anywhere.
It's, it's rare for something that's not, that's, hasn't been recommended by the committee to win a.
Correct. So you have fairly certain that that one's not going anywhere.
But with that said.
Yes.
Um, I'm, I'm in favor of that one, like adamantly in favor of getting rid of those regions as fast as possible. I think they're holding us back. But so just, just to remind the board that that is a huge topic with that blue ribbon committee and there'll be recommendations on, on what that will look like. We don't know exactly yet, but they're looking at changing the measurements.
You know, the talk is that Regents will still exist, but there'll be other options. Where all kids might still take a Regents, but they don't need it necessarily to graduate. And if they don't pass it, they would have to do something a little bit different, you know, to show that they mastered the level. So there's a whole lot of talk on that and there will be a lot more coming out on that as we go. And hopefully November 1st, we'll get some more specific detail. I, I just happened to go to a, a forum that Terry hosted at Questar, on the Blue Ribbon Commission, and I know Terry's going to bring a whole lot of expertise when it comes to the new recommendations. So he's going to help us. I, I know, I can just predict, wholeheartedly help us navigate some of those upcoming changes from the state.
That's really true. And people don't know, there always was another option to the Regents. And that's a project and you meet before a panel of three instructors and what have you. And there is that, but it's hard to access. It's difficult to do. And many students and their families don't have that info. I know Terry's expertise in this. And again, if he, we're in a position where he can give any information at all, that's, that's fine for me.
The spreadsheet that Mary Ann sent out to us, if each of us could look at that and then go down through it and either agree or disagree with you so that she can, Linda can have that spreadsheet in front of her. Right. And then if there is some, you know, people don't agree on one thing, then we can have a discussion about that at the next meeting. And then going forward, it would be much easier for her at that vote.
That, that would be fine. And after it's finished, I'd be glad to tell you what happened there, you know.
Thank you, Linda. I appreciate that. So yes, we'll get you as much feedback as possible so you can feel confident in, in the voting. And, and yeah, I, I like that, Nikki. That'll give us some opportunity to piece out the ones that really are important to us. So do we need to make a motion? Okay, so let's make a motion to nominate Linda to be our delegate. Is that?
Sorry, I too.
I too. There it is. Thank you. My computer keeps dropping. R29, be it resolved that the Board of Education designate Linda Colick as the voting delegate for the annual business meeting of the New York State School Boards Association. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Any questions?
All in favor? Do you have a question?
I'm good with that. And I can't, I don't, now that you put the paperwork in, is that it that I'm the delegate? It's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You want some time with Debbie to, I, I think they do a training day leading up to the vote, if I recall correctly. There's like a prepare to vote day, but we should find out.
Please.
Could I introduce the officer? I, I was, I was, so this is Deputy Tim Roberts.
I was just going to ask him to take a seat.
You can do that too. But Deputy Roberts is our school resource deputy. And he's been here since the beginning of school. And I have to say, I've been incredibly impressed and I've been getting really great feedback on how you've been interacting with kids and really making a big difference here. So thank you for your, your service and thank you for coming tonight. And please have a seat. Thanks for being here.
Yes. I'm glad I printed out this paper copy because my computer is locked right up, so.
You know, Board Docs does that sometimes. I keep two copies of the agenda open, one on the next agenda item, because it randomly wasn't. Yeah, it randomly freezes. Yep.
Okay, so we are on to J. New Business Instruction, Discussion of the Board Workshop and Announcement of District Goals. And this is regarding a board workshop we held on September 18th, which I felt was extremely efficient and productive. I was very, and the feedback I'd gotten from everybody else, we really needed that. We needed to hash that out and figure out our process. And anybody else have any comments?
I was going to say, I thought it was a great dynamic and we really came together. And I think you are correct that it's efficient. We got it done. Consensus was easy to have to get. I think we did a good job. Okay, give ourselves a pat on the back.
Not to assign work to other people, but I have a question. There was a bunch of markups on the process that day. You took ownership of that, right?
Yeah. So what I did is I put all the edits, all the things that I'm going to edit on it, right in the, there's like a retreats and workshop drive. And so I put all the notes that I transcribed right into there. And so at policy committee meeting, we will just go through them and then I will make a nice print copy and present it to the board.
Yes. Thank you for doing that. That was, that was huge. Keep it in the stack. Okay, so. Two, motion to approve the district goals. R30, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the 2024, 2025 district goals. Do you guys like me to read the district goals? Under Wellness Goal. The district will create a culture and programs that promote intellectual, physical and mental well-being. Academic Goal. Through evidence-based and rigorous programming, our school community will foster and inspire our students' full potential, advancing their postgraduate preparedness. Fiscal Goal. The district will ensure long-term financial sustainability and resilience to potential changes in funding by maximizing the efficiency and effectiveness of resources. And our Safety Goal. The district will make responsible efforts to promote the safety and security of our district students, staff and visitors while on campus through the mitigation of potential threats and risk reduction. And I have a motion. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I did want to state that the next step in this, and I actually have written out, the board and administration will collaborate to establish the successive annual priorities for each new goal with the metrics required to measure progress. So the next step is to get with administration and figure out priorities from those goals.
Right. And just to add to that, so we actually changed that. I don't have it in front of me. The district will consult, in consultation with the board, will create the priorities. And so I believe the next step is that Andrew is going to talk to his administrative cabinet to draft some priorities for us. And then we'll sit down together and review those and then approve those for the next step going forward. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. So starting tomorrow, I'll be, I will send out an email with these goals to all of our faculty and staff. Then I'll be working with administrators and teacher leaders to come up with priorities and then we'll bring them, bring them to this group. And then from there, for each priority, I'll be creating SMART goals so we can have some, some ways, some, you know, specifics on how we're going to achieve those priorities. So more to come.
Just the reason I collaborate versus consult with.
Yes, yes, correct.
That captures it a little bit more accurately.
I should have looked at the.
And we will add these to the district website as well.
It's okay. That's why you guys are keeping me honest here. That's the important thing. All right, so on to A, New Business. So this is motion for the appointment of the Director of Innovation, Curriculum and Assessment and Accept Memorandum of Appointment and Agreement. R31, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Chatham Central School District hereby accepts the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Terry Bordell to a three-year probationary appointment as the Director of Innovation, Curriculum and Assessment in the tenure area of Director of Innovation, Curriculum and Assessment, commencing November 12th, 2024 and ending November 11th, 2027. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education approves the terms and conditions of employment dated September 19th, 2024, authorizes the superintendent to sign the agreement and approves the benefits and payment of money contained therein. And I have a motion.
I am very happy to make that motion.
Motion or second?
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good chairing.
Okay, so consensus agenda. So I, can I have a motion to accept the consensus agenda L through M?
Second.
So there, there's one correction that we, that I need to, that just before I came, someone from the Transportation Department opened me up. So let me just look at my notes. Give me one second. So Amanda, if you go to motion, I don't know if this was included in that, but motion number seven, Amanda Kadenberg is not a bus driver. She's a bus aide. That was a typo.
Okay, so all in favor? You have a question?
First of all, I can say, we've got some resignations. And we just said hello to a lot of our new teachers and a moment to say farewell to some of our leading staff. Not just teachers. We had a bunch of new staff that were introduced here today, but, and perhaps this needs to go to Items for Future Agenda. But I'd like to have a board level conversation about the circumstances surrounding M4. And this isn't specific to the individual, but we've had a lot of churn in this position over the last few years. I've lost, lost count. So I want to, I want to understand from a macro level, you know, is this, do we need to make a programmatic change here? And I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but I can't think of another position in the school that's had such, such an important position and had such churn. So we're talking about the library director, so.
So maybe we can add that to Future Agenda, just like.
It's, it's just been, well, I, I don't know if we do or we don't, but some of it we may need to. There are some things that happened over the last, let's call it like 10 years, right? That, yeah, that's employment related, needs to be an executive session. But if it turns out that we need, that there's something programmatic that needs to happen, we can have that discussion publicly. But I, but I like to have that at a board, board level because it's just, it's such an important program for the school, so. I want to, I want to, I want to attract people that stay there. I want to attract the new director that stays there in the library. It's really what I, I don't know.
I think that'll be an important discussion, though. I will. I'll put that on Future Agenda.
I just want to say, M1, sad to see that, right, resignation. She's done a lot here. I think her, particularly the impact she's made on my child. He's really enjoyed her class and it's, sad to see that, but I wish her well.
Yeah, I feel that about all of them, actually. It's always, it's always a gut punch sometimes when they call and let us know, like, somebody's doing. And there's a variety of reasons that we're doing what we can and just try to keep and make everybody happy to be here. And we'll just keep looking away. But hopefully things change and we have had people come back and, you know, keep that out there. And the door is always open.
And I know one of our goals is to, you know, and I've said this all the way along, is to make this an environment that our staff and teachers and administrators want to stay and want to be at. And that's, that's a goal. And that will take, you know, time. And there's many different factors that play into that.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions, thoughts, comments? All right, so can I have a?
Wait, wait, one more. Sorry. N2, I think that's in this, is that in this group? Yeah, L through N. So Mike, just clarification here. The updates to the corrective action plan, was it just the dates that changed?
Yeah. So basically, we submitted this plan a year ago, September. Same response we did five years ago or four years ago. And then it did kick back. And the one thing they said is they didn't want the exact dates, so I put the exact dates.
That was it. Thank you.
That had to be the corrective action plan. I'm good with that. Anybody else? Okay. Gosh, I lost track of the order. So all in favor? Any opposed? So, how does this work for Items for Future Agenda? Do I state it here now?
Well, maybe, so I think I heard some, we should have an executive session so, to fill in some, some items. And then we can decide after that if we need to go into public session to talk about that. But I don't have an, I don't have a specific idea of timing, other than the fact that I presume are we putting a higher up? So maybe now.
And I think the way we usually do it, it's like just a topic to add to Future Agenda. And then, you know, you will work with Andrew on whether that topic needs to become a presentation or where we go from there.
Okay.
Where we fit it in. I guess that's what it comes down to.
Did you already post, Mike? Okay. So I mean, do we have time to push that, take that to the next meeting or?
So, you know, so I guess it would depend on what you want to talk about. If we want to talk about job description and what the job entails, that would be in public, right? But if we want to talk about specific nature of things, that would be executive.
I, I think my question, my, my observation is much bigger than an individual. Mike, you probably, you might know off the top of your head, how many library directors have been during the last few years? And, and. Yeah. And I know, I know that there was, there's always circumstances that are real. However, I, I just, you know, have to think that there, it might be within our power to change the circumstances so that it doesn't happen the same way. I mean, not that any of these things have been the same, but there might be things we could do to make that a more attractive position to, to stick in. And I, I don't know, but I know that, that program's really important and we've been rolling through directors like basically annually now. Now it just, it feels like that. It did. That was five years. And since then, it's been a bit of a rolling cast.
I, I have the reasons for all this. I mean, you talked about that exactly. But there are some, I agree with what you're saying. There's some things I'm thinking about too. What we post, what we get, they're different avenues probably others. That doubles. All years.
Yeah. So I, Mike, if you've got ideas and you want to bring them to us, that'd be great. Whenever you're ready, I guess.
So do we want to do executive session first? Is that?
Mike, what do you need for your?
So let's plan on, we can, we don't have an executive session planned for today. We can always add that. Or we can wait till next time.
You're putting a posting together. What do you, do you want us to meet today for 15 or 20 minutes on this? Or do you want to wait till next meeting?
It's not going to be long.
So let's do, let's, let's, let's add an executive session to this meeting. And I'll have Mike join us and that will be our topic.
All right. So now we will move on to the second public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on anything that they have observed or heard in this meeting. Is there anybody who has anything to say? Looking at you.
Anyone, anyone from home like to say anything for public comment? Okay, I think we're good.
Okay, so now we're going to, I don't have any other wording. We're going into executive session.
We're, we, we need a motion to amend.
Okay. I have a motion to amend the agenda to include an executive session.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I do not foresee us coming back into public after this. I think I remember the wording.
All right. So we have to, we have to appoint.
Oh, that's right. We need to make a motion, appoint Andrew.
Yeah.
District.
District for a tab. Motion?
Okay, so can I have a motion enter into executive session?
Could I ask, could we have like a four-minute break or something before we do that?
Sure.
But we, we can do the motion and then you can walk away.
Thank you.
Okay, so motion. Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. We're in executive session. Taking a four-minute break?
Yeah.
Five? Okay.